Yeah, you'll have to read those and initial them. What topic are you going to be on tonight?
I don't know if it's the topic that's on there.
No, you'll have to write it in right there.
Oh, okay.
On this line right there. And then are you an Independence resident?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
You're fine. And you'll have to initial all of those right there.
No, no, thank you.
And you don't? No, you'll be fine.
Sorry to hold you up there.
No, you're fine. Thank you, sir.
Anybody want to pull anything off?
We're just going to pull one and two.
We're just going to pull one and two?
Yeah, those are resolutions though.
Okay. And you're going to do three? Under Reports and Recommendations? Okay.
He's doing which one?
Are you talking about resolutions? Eleven and twelve? That's okay. Anybody else just to sign that heads up? Anybody pull anything? Got that. Okay. Nope. Okay. Welcome everyone to the City Council meeting, April 21st, 2025, 6:00 PM at the City Council Chambers, 111 East Maple. Please rise for an invocation that will be given for, to us by Steve Valentine, Assistant Pastor with the Mount Zion Restoration Branch. And then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Valentine, please proceed at your leisure. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united in God, equal and free, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Here.
Councilmember Perkins?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Councilmember McCandless?
Here.
Councilmember Wiley?
Here.
Councilmember Vought?
Here.
Mayor Rowland?
Here.
And that brings us to citizens' request. The first up is Becky Haake. Becky, please come forward and you have five minutes for your presentation.
Thank you. Mayor and City Council, I am here tonight to speak about the Streetscape project on the Independence Square. Tonight, there will be a vote to approve more than $2.6 million for the Streetscape project on the square. I see that all or part of this money tonight is eligible for reimbursement through grant money. Many of these grants are currently not coming through. Are there any guarantees for these? If I remember correctly, a few weeks ago, we also approved spend $285,000 for street light poles on the square. The several things that puzzled me about this is, I don't know how many of you know or are old enough to know or lived around here in the seventies, when a project like this was done on the square. They reduced parking, they put in a fountain, they had trees, they made it more appealing, but what happened was the stores left. People did not want to park block two away and walk. They liked being able to pull up against the store that they wanted to go in. If it was raining, if it was cold, or if it was hot, you could get in your car and drive around to the next street and get into the next store you wanted to. As far as I have heard, no one from Jackson County has responded to the proposed work being done around the courthouse involving sidewalks and parking. What happens if we have to redo it? What if they don't approve it? They're kind of wishy-washy these days. Is the county going to pay for that, or are we going to have to pay for it to be done? Again. And the most puzzling one is, in December of 2013, the Independence Square obtained a TIF. The purpose for this was to beautification and new streetscapes. In the past 11 years, all that can be found completed is some windows painted and a few facades on buildings redone. None of this 22 million of anticipated total project cost has been spent on streetscapes. In fact, very little of it has been spent at all. In fact, as of June 23rd, the last report filed for that year, the TIF only spent $4,620 that year. In light of all these questions, it's why are we spending our money, for money, our tax money, on a project that is supposed to be paid for currently by a TIF that's in existence? Why has no real work been done for the last 11 years with this TIF? It says it's fully operational. Wouldn't it make sense to have a TIF which is fully operational, to be functioning and doing some improvements? I mean, we could take this money, this 2.6 million, and put it towards deferred maintenance. I'm sure one of our historic homes could do a lot of good with that money, when the money is sitting there in a TIF for 11 years. And this project's been on the book for that long or longer. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Lee Phillips. And Lee, you have five minutes for your presentation.
For those who have ears, let them hear. Sorry about my voice. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Lee Phillips, a resident of Independence and the petition are behind the request for a state audit. I also serve as an elected Jackson County Committee Woman, and I take that responsibility seriously, especially when it comes to protecting public integrity and taxpayer trust. For clarity, my request is not for a routine city audit. A forensic audit is an independent investigation by the state auditor to uncover fraud, abuse, or systemic failure, going beyond routine reviews to restore trust when oversight breaks down. While my original petition calls for a state audit, the volume and substance of documented evidence, conflicts, withheld records, financial inconsistencies may evaluate that request into a forensic audit by nature and necessity. That designation rests with the state auditor, but the facts speak for themselves. With that in mind, I'm here to address a specific situation that exemplifies the very concerns this audit is meant to uncover. On April 16, 2025, I sent a formal letter to the council and the public outlining concerns tied to Resolution 25745, which proposes a $10,000 commitment to the Legacy Project, TC3, as part of the 2026 Parade of Hearts Initiative. I requested it to be tabled to avoid advancing under a cloud of conflict. This resolution, as written, presents a clear and documentable conflict of interest involving the city manager and his spouse, who is a partner in Everest Drive Solutions LLC, a contractor.
We can't mention anyone specifically. You can talk about a topic.
There's a disclosure.
I understand, but you can say, but, you know, Mr. Coover, can you give me a ruling on this to make sure that I'm following protocol?
What has been practiced in the past is that you're not allowed to name names. If you want to refer to, you know, the council or even the city manager, you shouldn't be actually naming anyone specifically.
I didn't name his name.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just-
I said involving the city manager and his spouse. I never said a name.
Okay, I'm-
I, you know, I just think, please, I would say, you've got some concerns about a conflict, but I, please don't name names in the presentation, if you would please.
Okay.
Am I, am I out of bounds on that?
No, in the, Mayor, in the end, it's your, it's your call as to how far that has gone.
But I want to make sure I'm being consistent with all of the speakers and all of the occasions, so I don't, so I don't, you know, misconstrue anybody's rights.
To, I mean, this is on the agenda, it involves the city manager, I don't know that there's a way, you know, I think we can avoid naming names specifically, but to the extent it involves the city manager, I don't think there's a way around that on this particular topic, because it's, it is about him, so I would just let her, let her keep going.
Okay. I just wanted to defer to you.
I understand.
So, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that.
That's okay. I appreciate that. Anyway, involving the manager and his spouse, who is a partner in Everest Drive Solutions LLC, again, not mentioning a name but the company, a contractor for the very initiative being funded. The April 14, 2025 study session packet even contains a formal disclosure confirming this relationship. Missouri law, under our SMO, Sections 105.542 and 105.5, I'm sorry, 452 and 105.454 prohibits public officials from participating in matters where they or their spouse may receive direct or indirect benefit, including financial gain, promotional visibility, reputational enhancement, or benefit through contracts, consulting roles, or associated organizations with which they are connected. The City Charter, Section 5.3, affirms this prohibition and requires all city officials and employees to avoid conflicts or the appearance thereof. Yet despite this, our manager participated in the study session, including the financial discussion of where that payment would come from, and did not recuse himself or mention it. More concerning, the resolution was introduced from the council dais and reviewed internally by senior staff. Excuse me, while not a public official, Everest Drive Solutions LLC's co-owner, her business role and the relationship to the manager raises valid concerns about impartiality. This failure to recuse, intervene, or even acknowledge the conflict deepens the appearance of institutional complicity. No legal opinion was provided, no procedural safeguard invoked, and no council member raised a question to protect the public interest. Tonight, I am respectfully urging this council to table Resolution 25745 immediately. We all fall short at times, but when we recognize the appearance of impropriety, the right response is to pause, reflect, and act in the public's best interest. The integrity of this body and the public trust demands it. The conduct and circumstances surrounding this resolution have already met the threshold for concern. And to those who might suggest there is no violation because the contract is with a third party, or that no money is going directly to Everest Drive Solutions LLC, Missouri law addresses not only direct gain but indirect benefit. That includes reputational and promotional advantage for a business connected with a public official. I have faith that you will act with discernment. However, given the seriousness of this matter and regardless of tonight's outcome-
You have one minute.
-this matter will formally be referred to both the Missouri Attorney General and the Missouri Ethics Commission. In conclusion, given the nature of this conflict and the damage it does to public confidence, I believe it would be appropriate for Everest Drive Solutions LLC to remove themselves from any further professional engagement with the City of Independence for the duration of the manager's employment. It's just a necessary safeguard. Should someone choose to step down, the public would understand. It's an opportunity for renewal and a step toward restoring ethical accountability. Likewise, should any members of the council feel they can no longer serve the people of Independence with full integrity and clarity, the public would respect their decision to step aside in service of that higher calling. This moment calls for reflection, not deflection. The public is watching. I speak today with a heart grounded in truth and faith in God as my guide. Thank you. God bless.
Next up is John Marshall. And John, you have five minutes. If you could give those to Mr. Coover, and he'll do that, please.
I had issues at the library copying those, so some had three pages and others just had two. I'm sorry about that. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I just wanted to talk about the issues of HOAs. I have, or excuse me, I have met with-
Can you please state your name and your address, please?
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. My name is John Marshall. My address is 3307 South Thornburg Avenue, Independence, Missouri. And I just wanted to speak about the situation with the HOAs. I'm currently dealing with an HOA where we basically have a rogue board. They will not return my phone calls, they will not return emails, they will not speak to me. I haven't spoken to anyone on the board since February of this year, and that person was appointed, not even voted on. And the other two members, their term has expired in September and nobody voted to reelect them. So, sort of dealing with a situation where nobody is treating me like I exist. I currently have a situation where my neighbor is being allowed to take over the common area. There's 30 feet of common area between my property and my neighbor's property. My address ends in 01, or their, my address ends in 07, excuse me, I just stated that. And the other neighbor that I'm having the issue with, their property ends in 01 on that map that you were provided with. But they are essentially being allowed to take over that common area. It's strictly in the covenants that common areas are to be maintained by the board. The board is supposed to hire a contractor to mow and facilitate those areas to keep them looking nice. And then the other issue, and I have had prior meetings with representatives of the city, and I appreciate their time and everything that they've told me to do, and actually, they, a meeting with my particular district representative did direct me to the state representative, and so I did contact that state representative, and they directed me back here. He actually said to go and speak in front of the committee, or, yeah, committee, excuse me. So that's what I'm doing now. But the other thing that they're doing is they're really trying to just move forward with a replat without coming to the board and presenting, you know, their replat to the city to be approved, going through the process with the particular planning committee people that work for the city. And so I have had conversations with representatives from the city, and they basically say, you know, there's nothing we can do about it because we're not presenting a replat. And I've stated from the beginning that that's what they're, that's exactly what they're doing. They're just, they're basically acting like they've already come to the city council and got the replat approved, and now everybody's taking over common area. And it just is a problem for me because of the individual that you also have a pollution port on. My neighbor, they've committed misdemeanors on my property. They've removed property stakes that are solely on my property line. They have vandalized my property. They come out and record, when I'm out in my yard, my neighbor will come out and record me with their phone. They've slandered me to everybody in the neighborhood. They've lit the side of my house up like it's a drive-in movie screen. You know, it comes inside my house. I can't even sleep. I think there's issues that need to be addressed with light trespass, and they are actually currently trespassing on my property because they've landscaped just an edge portion of my property as their own. And there's, I just, you know, and when people, or excuse me, the representatives say, well, you know, there's nothing really we can do. We listen to these kind of issues all the time, and we just, you know, we just, we don't get involved. And I think, you know, if you're listening to these kind of issues all the time, then the system is broken. And I think reforms need to be, you know, put in place, because if you have a situation where an HOA is essentially allowed to be a sovereign nation unto itself, and, you know, if it's in the, because they're not even following their own covenants. You know, that's the whole problem, because like I stated, you know, the common areas are supposed to be maintained by, you know, a third-party contractor, not an individual property owner, and an individual property owner is not allowed to treat a common area as their own property. And so if there's, if I can't approach, you know, if I'm not able to have a conversation with this, about this, with my current board, who is essentially rogue, I mean, they're not, they were not reelected or elected to this current term, and they will not respond to me, then I don't have much left, recourse left. I'm sorry, sir.
No, I apologize. You've exceeded your time limit, so thank you very much. That brings us to our consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I move for approval of the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Okay.
Second?
So we've got a motion and a second for the consent agenda. Does anyone have anything they would like to pull for separate consideration? Please proceed.
Item number one and item number two.
Thank you, Councilmember McCandless. Councilmember McCandless has pulled item number one and item number two for separate consideration.
Item three.
Councilmember Fears has pulled item number three on the consent agenda. And then Councilmember Stewart?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull number 1125-744 and number 1225-745.
Okay, thank you. Excellent. Can I have a, we've got a motion and a second for all of the items except those that have been polled. Any further discussion? And then let's go ahead and approve those, and then we'll approve all of the other items separately. So Madam City Clerk, please call the roll for the consent agenda.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
And the consent agenda minus the polled items is approved, seven in favor, zero opposed. Councilmember McCandless, you have the floor on item number one.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. To inquire of the city manager?
Please proceed.
So, Mr. City Manager, this is an interesting contract in that it is a service that is shared among municipalities. So, Independence provides the base, and Blue Springs and the Central Jackson County Fire District pay us for a portion of maintaining that. Do I understand that correctly?
You do.
And the amount that we're approving is the portion that is ours. Forty percent of it is paid for by the other entities, and that is not included in the fiscal note. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I appreciate that you give us multiple years of budget. I think that helps us when making thoughtful decisions. I do raise the issue that they talk about cost escalations, and every single item that we are seeing is now seeing cost escalations. Is this what we should be expecting in budgetary issues going forward as tariffs begin to land?
I will tell you that as we are finalizing our development of the budget that we will submit to the council on May 12th, we are taking a very conservative approach and planning for cost escalation in any, any contract that does not have a guaranteed price associated with it for the upcoming fiscal year, we are planning certain percent cost escalations in there based on what we are seeing with the uncertainty in the global economy.
I do not envy you your budget process with this kind of market volatility, because it makes for a lot of moving targets as we are making estimates. So, I hope the community will give us the grace to recognize this is an unprecedented time in budgeting. In reviewing the 92-page document that comes along with this, I just want to tell you how much I appreciate the attention that they had in there for cybersecurity, for intrusion detection, for updates. I think that it is clear that they have spent a lot of time and energy. This is a very wise investment on the city's behalf, and so that's all I had to say. I move approval of item number one.
Second?
We've got a motion and a second for item number one. Any further discussion on item number one? Seeing none, we've got a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
Item number one passes seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to item number two. Councilmember McCandless, you have the floor.
Sorry. Turn on the microphone. Get my instructions straight. This item is about the square, and if anybody's been driving up there, you see a gigantic crater in the earth where we have been doing work. So, this isn't really like a decorative planting kind of activity. I mean, this is a fundamental archaeological dig, in part because some of these pipes are more than 100 years old, and so we are doing the base excavation for replacing the infrastructure. Is that fair?
Correct.
Okay. So, we're very, very lucky that we ended up with grant funds to help us with these kind of exploratory activities, in part because you don't know what you're going to find when you start digging around with 100-year-old piping, and we've already had a rupture in one of them, just because removing the mud around it made the clay pipe break. Do we have any reason to expect that this grant dollar will not arrive that we are approving tonight?
This is legislation that was approved by the United States Congress and signed into law by the President of the United States. No, I don't anticipate any funds not being delivered.
Thank you very much. I move approval of item number two.
Second?
Thank you very much. We've got a motion and a second for item number two. Any discussion on item number two?
Mr. Mayor, please proceed. Thank you. I will have other comments towards, or Councilmember comments, I don't want to muddy the water between the two conversations here that was brought up by one of our speakers. Just for everyone's update, the county did vote for approval today for the right of access to the property to do work on the Independence Square, so that's been taken care of as of today. That information was given by legislator Barca earlier or later this afternoon, so that is taken care of. The funding mechanism, Congressman Cleaver has been wonderful working with us. We've worked with him for several years, securing these funds so only we don't have to take as much money out of our coffers. I could go back into the history and how long we've been working with those conversations, and I've been on the council for the past two election cycles, to work with them, to work with the Independence Square Association, the Business Association, the public meetings, public engagements we've had, the Downtown Redevelopment Committee has all put this together to work with, getting enhancements up onto our square. This is nothing that has been hidden. This has been going on for years. I would love to sit down and talk to anybody who would like to continually discuss how we've got here, and also the bigger plans on where we're going. The plans for redevelopment on the square is the same that we're doing in Englewood, and the same that we're going to be doing in Fairmont, so.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else have further discussions on item number two? Seeing no further discussion on item number two, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Item number two passes seven in favor, zero opposed. It brings us to item number three. Councilmember Fears, the floor is yours.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve item number three.
We've got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second for item number three. Councilmember Fears, please proceed.
To request information from the city manager.
Please proceed.
The city manager, I just want to make sure, so this is a big truck shed, it's not a little truck shed, that for $907,000, that would be big, I would think. And I just want to raise a question relative to the long-term budget. So, this is in our capital budget. Is that correct? I just want to make sure I'm clear on that.
You are correct.
And so we budgeted for this, we planned for this for a number of years, it's been in the process for a long time, and, and so we're just taking action, nothing new on just, just moving forward on already planned activity.
Yes, sir, this is a multi-year project that's been saved up for over the course of several fiscal years with our capital improvements plan. Again, as a reminder, I know you all know this, but for our general public, per the city charter, the five-year capital improvements plan goes to the planning commission each year for their review, they send a follow-up correspondence to the council, and then of course, all of that being adopted as part of the annual budget process, so all of this has been thoughtfully planned out over a multi-year period, and now you're seeing the end result this evening.
Okay, thank you. So ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion on item number three? Seeing no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Item number three passes seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to item number 1125-744. Councilmember Stewart, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder for everybody on the council and in the audience or watching from home, this is a resolution that would authorize the city manager to use $100,000 out of the marijuana sales tax to offer rewards for unsolved homicides, as well as some DNA testing on some cold case homicides. And I would just encourage my city council members to approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr., excuse me, Councilmember Stewart?
Oh, I'll make a motion to approve 25744.
Thank you. We've got a motion and a second for 25744. Any further discussion on 25744? Seeing no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Item number 1125744 is approved, seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to item number 1225745. Councilmember Stewart, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we all received an email from a constituent after the study session last week that brought up some concerns that they felt could possibly be some ethics violations, I believe the way it was worded, with the city manager and his spouse, and that same person actually was a citizen speaker tonight. So after receiving the email from this person, I actually sent, I actually requested and received a legal opinion on this. And the legal opinion I received was from James Kalar, he's an attorney with LaBra Municipal Law. And just a little background on Mr. Kalar, he's, he's a former executive director of the Missouri Ethics Commission, where he educated public officials about ethics laws and enforced violations of the laws. He also was an assistant attorney general of the Government Affairs Section for the Missouri Attorney General's Office, where he counseled state agencies, boards, and commissions that handled sunshine law enforcement. So while I'm not going to read the entire opinion, please bear with me, I'm going to read the conclusion, which is about two paragraphs long. And I do also have some copies, if anybody wants them tonight, and this is also a sunshineable document, so if anybody wants to request it that way. So Mr. Kalar concludes, "The complaint lodged with the city council raises questions about whether the city council's recent discussion at the study session triggered a conflict of interest for the city manager to the extent the city manager participated in the discussion about the proposed resolution. The documentation for the agenda includes disclosure information, disclosure informing council members that Everstrive Solution is a contract consultant for Parade of Hearts, the entity the city would be working with and making a related financial commitment to work for at the Parade of Hearts, to work with the city on the Regional Economic Development Initiative. The Parade of Hearts is a separate entity from Everstrive, organized as an LLC and having its own board of directors. Based on the information I have received, the provisions in Sections 1.5, 4.52, and 1.5454 RSMO do not apply to this situation. There appears to be no special monetary benefit for Everstrive if the council moves forward with a $10,000 commitment with this initiative." There does not appear to be a violation of Section 1.5454 because any service that performed will be performed with, by Parade of Hearts, nothing in the complaint alleges the city manager or the city manager's spouse has a financial interest in Parade of Hearts. Finally, the complaint asserts that the failure of those at the study session to voice specific concerns about any potential conflict of interest during the study session amounts to either a lapse of diligence, or at worst, wilful disregard. I do not see any merit in this assertion, particularly given the clear disclosure included in the study session packet. It is logical to conclude that a reasonable person reviewing the disclosure about the proposed resolution would not ask follow-up questions about the disclosure. With that said, I make a motion to approve 25-745.
We've got a motion, is there a second? We've got a motion and a second for 25745. Any further discussion?
A second.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I received a letter from a constituent who talked about how much they appreciated the discussion that we had on this app. He said that he, for three years, has used the app to find, he's an Independence resident, by the way, he has used it to find every single heart in the city, and has used the app to then visit every single business that was listed, associated with those hearts, and that it was one of their favorite things about being able to explore Kansas City in a brighter, broader region. Strongly encourages us to support this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have other further discussion? Please proceed.
Just a question, I want to just make sure, so this will be coming then from the tourism budget, is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on item number 1225745.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Item number 25745 passes seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to our public hearing, and we'll open the public hearing. This is for new information only. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
A public hearing for the application to rezone the property at 420 South M291 Highway from C2 General Commercial to I1 Industrial, new information only.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Rick Arroyo, the Assistant Community Development Director here at the city. This rezoning was considered by planning commission on March 11th of this year. The planning commission did recommend in favor of this rezoning. The applicant here wishes to rezone this undeveloped property along M7291 Highway from C2 Commercial to I1 Industrial for the purpose of a CDL truck driving course. I have no new information to provide.
Thank you. That will close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-021, second reading, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District C2 General Commercial to District I1 Industrial for the property at 420 South M291 Highway. Second reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on 25021?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
So I don't know whether to address this to Mr. Walker, Mr. Rural, whoever, but my question really is, did we not have a similar case come before us sometime not all that long ago?
I can answer that, yes. So this was actually brought before the council back in December of 2023.
Longer than I thought.
Same thing, essentially.
Okay. And, and what's changed in this case since that time, because when we, when we voted against this?
So I would say, really, the only major difference was some more specificity as to where they would be locating this truck driving course. There is a requirement for a tree preservation plan with this, along with some screening.
For what?
For a tree preservation plan, and some screening in the rear that's required per the city code. Of course, all the other code specifications will still need to be met, but I think the heart of your question is that more specificity as to where all this will actually take place on the site.
And I'm recalling last time that this became, came before us, that there were a number of neighbors that spoke against it, concerned about the noise and of tractor-trailers and things of that nature, you know, and that, am I recalling that correctly?
I don't remember how many, but I, that was, I do recall there being concerns about noise and tractor-trailer activity, yes.
So I'm just trying to figure out why I would vote for it now when I voted against it before, that's what I'm trying to figure out. And so, okay, I think those are answers to my question.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
So I voted against this the last time. Councilmember Perkins brought up good points, which were this land is restricted because it has caves underneath it, and because the availability of water and electric is very difficult for this space. I was concerned about the noise. I spoke with city manager Walker, who assured me that there is a buffer screening so that you won't be able to see this from 291. Is that a fair assessment of this, Mr. Arroyo?
So the intent here is to try to keep as many trees that are in the front to prevent that. There is an access off of 291, so you can't say that you won't see any aspects of it, but the intent here, again, with that tree preservation plan, is to make sure that there's enough buffering in the front as well as in the rear.
Okay. And this does not add a new access point from 291, it's using an already established access point?
That is correct.
And my understanding is they're going to take trucks, put them on the land, leave them there for driving school. It's not that there's going to be a huge number of semi-trucks having ingress and egress from this particular site.
They would not be able to store vehicles there.
Okay, so they will be bringing them in every single day for, for training?
Yeah.
I still think that the preservation of trees there helps very much with my concerns about visibility from the road and buffering the noise from the backside. So I'm going to be willing to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Mr. Arroyo, sorry. So she's saying, you said you can't see it from 291, but what about from Salisbury and the road that runs directly behind it? Can you see it from there?
So we don't really have any, I would say, visual ability to kind of tell that, but I mean, I'm assuming you're going to see some aspects of it. I mean, buffering can only really cover so much in terms of height, and that's the purpose of the, the screening in the back, as well as the landscaping. But I can't say for certain that you will never be able to see it from there.
And have they given indication on how many trucks that they're going to be using on a daily basis?
If you bear with me, let me see if I've got that or not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
And this is going to be operating during normal business hours?
That is correct.
Okay. And is there going to be a structure built on this site?
I don't believe there'll be an actual structure. I'm not actually seeing an actual structure, so it'll just be the pavement. And again, they'll have to have a detention system there for any of the impervious coverage, but that wouldn't necessarily be the, other than those structures, that's what it would be.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have other further discussions? Seeing no further discussions on 25021, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
No.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And just to clarify, Councilmember Fears, I, I just wanted to clarify that you did in fact vote no.
I, I did in fact vote no. I, I voted no the first time, I didn't see, you know, any reason to make a change, so I.
But I, I couldn't hear clearly, so.
I was trying to be consistent, yes.
No, 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 I, I wasn't asking, just for clarity's sake, for the, to record the vote, six in favor, one opposed, and that way the recording is, is accurate, so thank you very much.
Exactly.
So 25021 passes, six in favor, one opposed. That brings us to ordinances 25020. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-020, second reading, an ordinance amending the Articles of Chapter 11 of the Code of the City of Independence, Missouri pertaining to food establishment and retail sanitation and adopting the sections of the Food and Drug Administration Model Food Code 2022 Edition as the Food Establishment and Retail Sanitation Code. Second reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on 25020? Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Manager, I assume that this will make us consistent. When we choose an overarching set of codes, it makes us consistent with other municipalities, so when you have franchises working in Blue Springs or Lenexa, they're seeing the same set of food requirements. Is that fair?
I would agree with what you're saying, absolutely.
And it also allows for it to be updated when the FDA code changes rather than requiring approval, or will we still have to approve it when there's a new update?
We will still come to the council unless there's administrative issues, but as far as some of these restrictions on the businesses themselves, that will still require us to come to the council. A good example for those watching at home tonight would be several months ago when the council updated several of the different construction-related codes to keep up with the industry updates. This is similar to that, that we would be in keeping with best practices, but would then come forward to you anytime there are substantial changes to, to these particular codes.
Very good, thank you very much.
Anyone else have other further discussion on 25020? Councilmember Wiley, any, anyone else? Okay. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on 25020.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Sorry, Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. 25020 passes seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to 25022. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-022, second reading, an ordinance amending the Independence City Code, Chapter 3, Animals and Fowls. Second reading.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
So this is, just as a reminder to the council, this is an ordinance that Councilmember Wiley and myself have been working on for a while, and it's primarily the culmination of the work that we've done relative to responsible ownership of animals and not being able to have commercial breeding in the, in the city. So that's, just as a summary of what that is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have other further discussion? Thank you. Anyone else have further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. That brings us to 25-022. It passes seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to first readings. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-023, first reading, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District I-1 Industrial to District R-6 Single Family Residential for the property located along Zahn Avenue and Hawker Avenue north of Truman Road. First reading. 25-024, first reading, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District O-1 Office Residential to District C-2 General Commercial for the property located at 20201 and 20221 East Jackson Drive. First reading. 25-025, first reading, an ordinance changing the name of a segment of Necessary Road to South Pop Warner Drive. First reading. 25-026, first reading, an ordinance finding, determining, and declaring the necessity of acquiring temporary construction easements for the sidewalks program Phase 2 project. Project number 112209, authorizing negotiation with property owners and the initiation of eminent domain proceedings if necessary, approving the plans and specifications for the project, authorizing the use of experts as needed, and authorizing and directing the execution of documents and the payment of funds to property owners or others holding property rights in connection with the project. First reading.
Thank you very much. That brings us to Councilmember Comments. Councilmember Fears, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. So this morning, we spent time as council talking about governance of IPL, and I thought we just that was our initial discussion in that regard, and I thought it went well. We had our consultant from DKMT back in to help us kind of walk through that. It was a good process. Public may wish to take a look at that. I'm sure it's recorded. And it's just the beginning of that discussion. So there's more to come, and we will have public, you know, sessions when we can when we can open that up to the public as well. But I thought it was a good start and worthwhile endeavor to start that out. The only other comment I had, just as a general comment, you know, at our council meetings, someone at all the different council meetings comes and shares a prayer to open our time together. And I just want to just tell those folks that do that on a regular basis that it is appreciated. You know, that's a humbling experience to be prayed for in that way, I think, and at least I find it that way. And I just want to tell those folks that I appreciate that effort and what they do. So that's all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Fears. Councilmember Stewart?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Wiley?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Vaught?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So two weeks ago, I mentioned how the Independence Fire Department will come install up to two smoke detectors in your home if you don't have working smoke detectors. This coming Saturday, April 26, the fire department and the Red Cross are partnering together for a program called Sound the Alarm. They're looking for volunteers to help go door-to-door in groups and install smoke detectors in residents' homes in the Inglewood neighborhood. I was privileged to do this a few months ago, and the residents were super appreciative, and they were very nice to us. And it was really surprising, actually, how many homes did not have working smoke detectors. So there will be two sessions. One starts at 8:00 AM, one starts at 1:00 PM, and breakfast is served. Lunch will be provided by the Salvation Army and taken it to the streets. This is a just a much-needed program, and I'm so thankful that our fire department does this and the Red Cross does this. If you want more information, you can contact the fire department or the Red Cross at 816-500-5644. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Vaught. Councilmember McCandless?
Thank you very much. I have a couple of things. First, we celebrated National Volunteer Appreciation Day, and I think people don't realize how many volunteers it takes to run a city. I'm looking at several in the audience here who give of their time to serve on committees and commissions and help the retirees and come and work at Vale Mansion and Bingham-Wagner and the Truman Library. So just our deep appreciation for your contributions of time and energy and effort to help your neighborhood and to help your community. So thank you for that. And if you're looking for some volunteer opportunities, give me a call. I've got plenty of ideas for things that could keep you busy. Secondly, I wanted to give a shout out to Sergeant Henninger, who received a special commendation from Hope House for their Everyday Hero Award. The police department help with kids who need supervised visits with their parents, and they set up, I'm sure, a very elaborate scheduling system to be sure that they have police there at the right time. But it's a gift to the parents. It's a gift to the children, and my really deep appreciation to the police department. That's the kind of stuff that you don't necessarily realize that they are doing that makes for a better community. So that's one of the secret sauce that the Independence Police Department brings. So if you'll pass my gratitude on, thank you. I had the privilege of going down to Casey Moore, to KC Mo, to the council chambers there. And let me tell you, our parking here is great compared to parking to go down to City Hall in Kansas City. It's a beast. But I got to go to the Neighborhood Committee, and they recommended unanimously passing out the Blue Ridge CID. So this is for the Blue Ridge Crossing shops that are in the Kansas City portion. This is a unique opportunity for Councilmember Vaught's district to be able to do a shared CID for increased security and some cosmetic things, but primarily security for the whole area there. So that's the Lowe's, the Walmart, right at Sterling and 40. They're going to have a shared oversight commission, so it's shared between Independence and Kansas City. I have requested that we receive reports on both what the Kansas City side generated as well as the Independence side, so we can look at that as the shared opportunity that it presents. Our utilization of the Irish transportation program is picking up. So I know that transition was hard for a lot of people. I appreciate that more people are using it. Obviously, the weather is nicer, so folks are out a little bit more, but I think it's a testament to trying to adapt it to make it usable for our riders. And just as a reminder, paratransit did not change. It stayed the same. People who used paratransit before can use paratransit exactly the way that they did before we made the changes to the Irish system to the bus system. I want to just have a moment of recognition that Pope passed. For people who are Catholic, that's a really big deal. And so, you know, he did a lot to bring goodness into the world. We need lots of that. So in appreciation for his life of service. And then my last question is for Mr. Cover. We get asked to step into all kinds of interneighborhood disputes between neighbors who don't like each other and all kinds of things. When these don't rise to the level of criminal issues, what is the role of the city, especially with this kind of complex set of rules around HOAs and their dominion? So if you could help speak to that.
Sure thing. I'd be happy to. You know, fundamentally, whether or not an HOA is involved, if you're talking about these kind of civil disagreements between neighbors, that there really isn't a place for the city to get involved. Like I said, and that's really the case whether there is an HOA or not, because sometimes if there's not, then it's just between, you know, actual neighbors who are right next to each other or near each other. If an HOA is involved, then it's still your neighbors. Again, an HOA is made up of people in the neighborhood. You know, oftentimes, they own common ground that the HOA does, and sometimes that's an issue, as is the situation with with Mr. Marshall. So, you know, unless and until it rises to some sort of criminal activity, which is unfortunate and hope we hope doesn't happen, there really isn't much for the city to do. HOAs are not governed by the by the city. They have, you know, a separate set of statutes that that apply to HOAs. Obviously, you know, there is certain opinions on whether or not they should be regulated more than they are, but that's for the state legislature to decide, not for the city. So there isn't anything that Independence, an ordinance that we do or don't have or anything like that, that's making it more or less difficult for us to to engage with homeowners and HOAs. It's just the fact that there are some, the covenants they have, while oftentimes, depending on when the subdivision was formed, they may have submitted those to the city, but those are their rules. They aren't our rules. So we can't, the city is not in a position to enforce their HOA covenants. That is up to them to enforce or not to enforce. And if the board or a resident disagrees with that, then that's up to them to in order to, you know, adjudicate that how they how they see fit. It's not, there is not a place for the city to get involved in those kind of disputes.
So it sounds like their remedy is a civil remedy. They would have to sue each other in order to figure this out because we don't have any jurisdiction.
Yes, ma'am. And that's exactly what I recommended to Mr. Marshall.
Okay. This won't, this won't be the last time that we have people who come and have disputes with our HOA. I think we probably get two letters a month about this issue. So it helps to have that kind of legal clarity. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Perkins?
Thank you, Mayor. Before I get going into the meat of my comments, I want to just make a kind of a blanket statement to the folks in the city in general and specifically to the constituents of the First District. One of the things I pride myself at to do is try to respond back to telephone calls, emails as quickly as possible. I try to hit the mark pretty darn well. Sometimes I don't. I do have a 40-hour work week job, so give me a little latitude there. But one of the things I really enjoy doing, and I enjoy facilitating, is when there's questions or comments or just lack of understanding, I enjoy meeting people where they are at with their knowledge or misunderstandings or want to know more about what's taking place. As you can imagine, the First District is very busy. We have virtually all the historic sites. We have most of or a good portion of where we are going to do major redevelopment in conjunction with our federal programs, state programs, county programs when available. So there's a lot of moving parts, and there's a lot of interconnectivity and sometimes a misunderstanding of how all of these relate. So at any point in time, please feel free to contact me. Happy to have conversations and certainly get those who are more involved in the grassroots organizations, because I'm not smart enough to know everything, and I'm smart enough to know that I'll rely on the people who are the Board of Directors in Inglewood, the Board of Directors on the Square Associations, the executive directors, the directors of the CID on 24 Highway, so we can all sit down with comprehensive information for a better understanding. So I preface that with this. Under Citizen Commons, there were some comments that showed complete lack of misunderstanding of what's taking place up here regarding our TIF and other developments. So, Mr. City Manager, can you expound just a little bit on what our TIF and how our facade program is working, and I'll give a few examples of how this has made impact?
Yes, sir. I would be glad to. The tax increment financing project for the Independence Square functions like any other tax increment finance project. An applicant has to go through some certain processes to find what the project is going to be, has to have a finding of blight, has to come before the Tax Increment Finance Commission with a plan of what they're planning to do, get that approved for recommendation, and then ultimately approved by the city council. At a very high level, in the case of the Independence Square Tax Increment Finance Project, 90% of those funds by covenant of what was approved for the tax increment financing project, 90% of those funds have to be spent on facade grant improvements. So the businesses on the square, the merchants up there, the property owners, may make application to make facade improvements to the exteriors of their building. Then 10% of those funds are available for public improvements. And public improvements could be anything from sidewalk repair, street maintenance, beautification, anything within the public realm. But nine out of $10 that come in must be spent on facade grant improvements to the physical properties on the square.
That's a good assessment. Thank you. Just before, I'll say this before people jump to conclusions. There's over 100 property owners up on the square. One of the first applicants for the facade program that we are now talking about is from John Norton, and I've had permission to talk about this before from him, and I'll do it now. He was one of the first. He's a retired postal worker, lives in Kentucky Hills. His facade was $70,000. So we're not just throwing paint on a wall or just fixing some broken windows. We're putting serious dollar amounts onto the square. These are business owners who live and work here who are making things better for our community. And I would also say for the record, those individuals who have come and spoke before this council, they leave. They don't have the courtesy to sit here and listen to the stuff that we discuss. I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anything else, Councilmember? Okay, thank you.
I've got a couple of things. A shout out to IPL. For the third year in a row, IPL has earned the national recognition for the Diamond Award. And the Diamond Award is the, excuse me, the top safety level for the American Public Safety Power Association. So over the past five years, our team has worked very hard to reduce injuries on the job, and this award reflects that effort. It's a result of every employee at IPL, their commitment to safety, to training and education. So let's celebrate this achievement and thank our IPL crews for keeping the lights on, but more importantly, being safe while they're doing that. I know this is typically out of protocol, but, Mr. City Manager, I'd certainly love to give you a moment to add anything to that, because I just think that's extraordinary that they've done that, and just giving a shout out to IPL for that.
Well, Mayor, you said it well. We are, you know, on the smaller side of all utilities nationwide that are municipally owned. Most are, you know, private investor-owned utilities, and an even smaller percentage of those qualify and are able to earn this award every year. So I hope this gives you, your colleagues, and our customers through Independence Power and Light some measure of pride, because they deserve to have that for the quality of work that is being done at all levels of the organization inside of Independence Power and Light.
Well done. Shout out to IPL for that. And then also, along the lines of IPL, on a belated note, 4/18 or April 18, 2025, was Lineman Appreciation Day. So we want to certainly appreciate the linemen who do the work in those winter storms and severe weather to maintain and repair our over 870 miles of power lines to keep the electricity on for roughly 600,000, excuse me, 60,000 customers. So that's very, very important for the safety of our community. Also want to give a shout out to Councilmember Vaught in collaboration with IPD, Community Development, and also with the city's finance department. I think this is a truly remarkable accomplishment, a 35% reduction in crime in a three-month period near the intersection of Nolan Road and I-70. That is truly, Councilmember Vaught, a great accomplishment. And this decrease followed the Community Development Department's decision to revoke a business license of a hotel there in the area. IPD reported significant drop in various crimes, including weapon violations and drug offenses. So that has made IPD's job a lot easier, not having to have so many calls, but also to be proactive in dealing with that. And I know this is also out of protocol, Councilmember Vaught, but just wanted to give you a moment if you'd like to share anything else on that.
Thank you for the recognition, Mayor. But this was a big team effort. Also, it was along with Assistant City Manager Charlie DeSalle. And I have to write them down because, see, I forget. Animal Health and Animal Services, I'm not sure they were mentioned. But it was a very, it was collaborative efforts. I'm proud of that. And I'm just glad to hear that the closure has had a positive impact on the area and the city as a whole. So thank you.
Absolutely. And, Mr. City Manager, you want to add anything on that one before we move on?
The word I love that you used, Mayor, was proactive. I think anytime we can be proactive in our public safety efforts, the community benefits, our budget certainly benefits. So we will continue this interdepartmental approach to proactive public safety in the community.
And to, as elected officials, it's really great for us to say a 35% reduction in crime. That's pretty powerful. Also, want to mention, you've heard me talk about Bongo. Bongo has been in the Bongo has been in the shelter for over a year, and, well, no, tomorrow is Bongo's anniversary. He will be at the shelter for one year tomorrow. I know there are folks here who have actually mentioned to me they might in fact adopt Bongo, but I'm going to also give out a, a shout-out for Bongo, if I can, just one more ad for Bongo. You could adopt Bongo, or you could actually, you know, you can foster an animal from the shelter. It's like buying a, a used car. You can give it a test drive, take it home, try it out, see how it works, you know, kind of do that. Maybe some people don't, that probably is not the best analogy, but Bongo is an absolutely terrific dog, just tremendous energy with Bongo. So Bongo needs space, Bongo needs love, but I have, have a tremendous amount of affection for Bongo, and I want to see Bongo to do that. Also, Mr. City Manager, if I can ask one question, if I may please, and I know we're going to talk about street tax next weekend, or, excuse me, next week and next Monday, Mr. Wes Epperson has a request, is there any possibility that they can have their street tax meetings recorded? And I don't know if that's appropriate, or we can think about that, or talk about that, or discuss that, but I just wanted to, he mentioned that to me, and I wanted to say that I would in fact ask that question for him. You don't have to answer it now, but I just want to put that on the table and see if that's a possibility. So I'm not trying to put you on the spot there, but that's just something to consider. With that being said, Mr. City Manager, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick update for the council and your constituents. Last time we met, I shared with you sort of the next steps that would come with beginning to access and drawdown on the general obligation bond funds that were approved through question two by the community on April 8. Would like to share another update with you this evening as we continue to move forward through that. So of course, that question funded three different broad categories. With regard to bridges, I think we've had a lot of discussion about the Chrisler Avenue Bridge and the half of the bridge that's closed over there. That's not been for lack of effort to get that reopened, but as a standalone project, it's been a smaller one, and we've had difficulty getting contractor responsiveness to that. You may recall, the council approved a utilization of some of our federal American Recovery Plan Act dollars, our ARPA funds, for the design of the Kentucky Avenue Bridge over Mill Creek. So it is our plan, since both of those projects will be ready to go in short order, to get those bid out, following, we're going to be bringing action forward for the council to approve, to issue our first tranche of bond funds, and go ahead and get those two bridge projects bid with the goal of having those completed this fall, and, you know, by, by the time winter sets in, both of those bridges being reopened to the public. That's, of course, contingent on contractor availability and all of that, but we are going to make every effort from a city end to have those bridges reopened by the time the fall construction season's completed. We've had a little more opportunity to then contemplate the rollout of the $30 million for the street projects. Of course, we also have about $4.75 million per year that comes in for street improvements on the street sales tax fund. So our plan is to each fall bid a certain allocation of street improvements that would be paid for by bond funds that would be constructed in the spring, and then the spring bid another segment of street projects that would be paid for by sales tax funds, and then have those sales tax projects completed in the fall. So two different bid periods, two different construction periods, but all told, again, more than able to double our capacity for street overlay and reconstruction. And then finally, want the community to know, we are beginning to have our conversations with the principals at the seven elementary schools on sidewalks to begin figuring out, you know, school calendars and traffic patterns and behaviors, et cetera, so that we can start planning construction activity around those needs. So all three of those are moving forward, and assuming contractors are ready to go, you'll see two bridges open before this calendar year is done. That is all I have this evening, Mayor.
But hey, two bridges this year would be terrific. Okay, very, very good.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn and go into executive session under 610.021, number one and number two, number one legal, number two real estate.
Okay, very good. We got a second, we got a motion in a second. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yep. Seven in favor, we will adjourn to executive session.